Final agreement. Item number two, adoption of the agenda. One change, we do not have an in camera tonight. Any other comments? Moving on, declaration, conflict of interest or pecuniary interest, anyone? Item four, delegations, presentations, or petitions. We have Dylan Consulting here tonight to give a community plan update. So if you'd like to introduce yourselves or go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Amanda Bree Watson. I am a professional community planner. From Yellowknife, I've been there about seven years and I won't tell you my whole life story, but I've done municipal planning across Canada.
And hi everyone, my name's Camila Ramos-Strankman, also a planner with Dylan Consulting. I've been with Dylan for about three years, but planning for almost six now. And yeah, we were here earlier in August and that we're glad to be back.
Thanks for having us. So I guess I'll just say, since we were here, we went away and did some writing. We have what we're calling a sixty, sixty-five percent draft community plan, which we want to present to you first. And if there's anything really, really wrong, we'll try to tweak it before we meet with the public later this week. But really, it's to see how well what we, how well we have lined up what we've written with what you think the community needs. A community plan is really a long-term document, as a visionary document for you guys for the next twenty, twenty-five years. So we think big. And then the zoning bylaw is the day-to-day documents that you use to kind of administer and make sure people are following the rules. So that things can be built in a way that aligns with your long-term vision for the community. You can't hear me, I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions, please, please, please let me know. Um, no, so I'm not good. No, no, okay. So we did the introductions. So the third person that is working with the community is Dustin Martin. He's also a planner for Yellowknife, and he's worked predominantly on the Housing Accelerator Fund. We'll, I'll touch on first and then I'll go into the community plan. Again, just a quick overview, so your housing initiatives, the community plan, zoning bylaw review and update. I'll kind of overview of that and just kind of really quick step up outline of what we've done and what we intend to do after this week. So again, the first thing I think we'll talk about is housing. I think that's one of the most prevalent conversations probably happening in town. At a national level, there is a housing crisis in Canada, not going to bore you with that. The North Coast Territories definitely has noticed this probably before some unrest in Canada. And simply put, currently Inuit does not have enough housing. So what Dylan helps the town do is prepare an application to CMHC to receive funding for basically a strategy to deal with with housing. There are five initiatives from that funding application. One would be to expand the utilitor infrastructure. The second would be to demolish and acquire land, demolish buildings and acquire lands so that we can rebuild housing probably at higher density, maybe even with mixed use, but not having land just doing nothing or probably becoming a hazard in your community. The third is hiring a development officer. The fourth would be creating some sort of incentives and promoting secondary suites, and I can go into the definition of what that is if any of you have questions. And then the fifth one is undertaking a housing gap analysis. We haven't heard back from Canada yet, but it does sound like these initiatives, I shouldn't say Canada, CMHC. These initiatives do align with CMHC's goals of creating affordable, inclusive, and diverse housing within the community. So Michael may have more information than I do about the timeline or when he's expecting to hear back, but I think it's soon that they're making decisions on these applications.
I would just add that we did receive seven or eight questions from CMHC about our application, so that is telling me that they have looked at it and they're ready for the review process, which is actually quite vast for the size of the application that we're putting in. And you know that we did not make the mistake that Calgary made where they didn't include a certain type of housing and their initial application was disqualified. So I made sure we steer clear of that. And other than that, we are in the QAs.
One of the requirements of the application is that the strategy is supported by council, so I think that is later on your agenda. So I won't, I won't dwell on that, I'll come back up later. So I don't know if you guys have heard this, I don't know if you have questions about it, but there's this concept of the missing middle. And it's anything from a single detached dwelling with one unit all the way to kind of a four-unit or a small apartment building. What we're seeing is, at least down south, there's really two things being built. Single detached houses and large-scale apartment buildings, and it's not giving that diverse opportunity for housing and it's creating some awkward living environments for people. So we are looking, when we talk to the community this week, to see what types of housing they would be comfortable with. How dense we can go. I, row housing, townhouses is something that's quite common up here, so that might be something they're comfortable with.
And this is the piece that Calgary didn't put in their application, was this missing middle group. So my understanding was they reject, their application was sent back. They didn't do another one.
So the missing middle isn't some mystic, high-level science, it's just one end of the spectrum, the other end of the spectrum, we're trying to fill that, that piece in the middle. So secondary suites, granny suites, there's all sorts of different names for it, but something that you may see more common popping up just because people have space is in their existing single detached dwelling. They may have carved out a part of a basement or of the back of their house to have a second unit, or even sometimes people purpose build and/or convert garages into housing for people. So on one property, there's two separate units that two groups of people could occupy. And then there is the affordable housing spectrum, something council couldn't consider. Is hypothetically, if somebody were coming in and building ten units, you could have bylaws that require one in ten minutes is affordable. Or something to that nature, if that's a goal or initiative of council. It can be difficult then if you've already got a challenge with developers. But at the end of the day, it does create more options for more people to have a safe place to live. And I'll just keep going unless there's anything in place. Okay, so that was the Housing Accelerator Fund, and this is the Community and Zoning Bylaw. So I think council knows this, but this is really for the benefit of council. I think people forget how large your town boundary is. You have a lot of land. I think most people just focus on kind of the airport and then the built-up area that is serviced by your utilitor. So to make a long story short, both of these documents have been in place for quite some time. They were approved in 2015, and things have changed, so it's good to revisit them and it's a good opportunity to align these documents with any new strategies of council or initiatives, big things that are prevalent that's the community at its time. So I stole this image from GNWG. It just kind of shows that planning is, it's a cycle, you kind of, you're never done with your planning process. The key partners in this, of course, it's a town-led initiative, but the staff and council are really the movers and shakers. This will be council's plan, they will adopt it by bylaw, as well as their sort of ballot. Really important that we hear from the residents. We didn't get a chance to meet with the elders on our previous meeting, that, that meeting didn't work out. And the public engagement was not well attended, so we are hoping to hear from more people on this trip. The indigenous governance and/or land neighbors. We will be speaking to them. We did meet with the, both the Inuit element and the Russian staff members on our previous visits, so we're going to go back and ask them what they think about this. And any kind of key stakeholders, so people who are, have current town businesses, looking to start businesses, people that have shown interest in developing land or organizing something in the community. And of course, many departments of the government of the North Coast Territories interact with the town, so understanding how that plays in. What I didn't put on there, but I'm happy to say we are talking with, is the airport. We kind of found that someone to talk to there, and the military.
The satellite facility.
Oh, the satellite facility, we got that as well, but we did get somebody from DND as well. So we are trying our best to reach out to the people that we think may have some long-term plans for doing things in your, in your community. I won't bore you with this side. All of this is to say that the Municipal Planning Act of the North Coast Territories tells me what I have to put in your plan. So the community plan has to include a purpose, it has to have a map, it has to on the map identify different colors for the different types of land uses, and then we have to put in policies. Although I did say the community plan is council's document, between second and third reading of the bylaw, it does go to the minister for reviewing approval. One of the things the minister ensures is that the DBD consult was completed, so that's not what we do, we do engagements. We're going to go talk to people. It is MACA from the GNWG that has the obligation to care that DBD consult is done. We have found very good success though through our early engagement with first. It enables plans to get cooked through because people aren't surprised in a bad way about what's coming. So again, the zoning bylaw is your day-to-day documents that has rules. So somebody wants to build a fence, or build a building, or put an addition onto the building, tells them how high and where they can go. Through your zoning bylaw, we do have development officers who have the development permits. And that is a public process, so I think that's great that people get informed about what's happening in the community and they can take part. So both of these documents, we are looking to update. We have spent more time in the community plan because we have to get that right before we can get into the fine details of the zoning bylaw. So again, we started off here in the summer as a kickoff meeting. We were here in August. We went away and did some writing. We've done a little bit of writing on the zoning bylaw. And we're here in October to get feedback, and then our, we're going to go away, try to finalize these documents for you, send them back to the administration and council. If you're happy with them, you go through your bylaw, bylaw process. Recommending you have a public hearing to get any feedback from the public before you adopt the bylaw. Then it goes off to MACA. Your zoning bylaw cannot be approved until your community plan is approved because one has to follow the other. And so we're hoping that you guys have documents that you like by the end of this year, and then you can hopefully approve them and the minister signs off of them early next year. That would be the ideal timeline. So what we've done and what we've heard so far. I will go through this pretty quickly. If anybody wants me to slow down or stop or go back, let me know. So again, before we even came out to the community, we did a bunch of research. Some of it was tabletop, some of it was looking at existing work Dylan ourselves have done in the community. So we can get some understanding of the community profile and population projections. As I said, we came to the community in August, we did a tour, we met new folks, and we did try our best to meet as many community members and stakeholders as we could. Then we went away and we drafted basically the document I was going to talk to you about. What we heard and what influenced the documents, again, housing, housing came up as pretty much number one, number one. There's not enough housing and there's not a lot of support for people who are either currently homeless or at the risk of becoming homeless. And in terms of the type of housing, it just sounded like everything, but in particular, senior students and affordable. So there's some ideas about having shared living working spaces, or maybe like commercial spaces on the main floor, and more residents on the, on the upstairs. We did not get any real feedback on this, so we're definitely hoping to keep our ears open and figure out what types of uses people would like to see between the airport and the built-up part of town. I do believe, I've heard like three-acre country residential lots, but I don't know where. So one of the activities we're going to do with the public is put up a map and get people to put some sticky dots on there. If council has any thoughts about where or what, we're very eager to hear that so that we can include those as well. The utilitor and your infrastructure. There's some maintenance that certainly needs to happen to your existing system, and there is a plan for the expansion. So our long-term land use planning documents have to follow really where your utilities are. And then there are opportunities for enhancing and improving things like signage, pedestrian connections, sidewalks, crosswalks. And I think we've heard that if possible, looking at alternatives to the utilitor. So I don't think if we're building across the highway, that we would be expanding the utilitor that way. I think we'd be looking at pump in, pump out and private systems out of the built area. And potentially possibly doing research or investigations to see if there is something that in the future could replace the utilitor completely. Well, who is this building? Looking at the life cycle of the town-owned infrastructure, some, some buildings have been renovated, some buildings could maybe do, have more renovations, but eventually sometimes it is cheaper from a long-term maintenance perspective to replace. So taking a look at what the town has, and if these buildings, for example, is, are replaced, would they be bigger? Would you need more land? Where would they go? And how would that impact how folks can come to you and the services that you provide? I touched upon that already, but the abandoned vacant and derelict buildings, those pose safety concerns from just being a place where people could start fires or get into buildings that are about to collapse and play in dangerous areas. But there's also land that is suitable for things that is just being taken up, but buildings aren't being used, so finding out what the town's policies or objectives are for an approach to dealing with that. And we can write some of those into the land use plan and zoning bylaw. There's other bylaws that you'll obviously have to have specific before this. But again, part of what we do is make sure that the two, like the two or three bylaws work together, so the town is trying to take action. They have two or three very specific documents they could look at that give them the power and authority to do that. So the airport lake area, from what I understand, there's some access and limited space for parking for those who like to go there for recreation. So exploring whether or not that has potential for more days or more parking. And more importantly, improving and making sure that the access for those that have sites there have same access here around. In terms of commercial, we understand that there is a variety of lots and building sizes. There's some pretty good opportunities to do things, but there's, there's again, from what I understand, maybe not a lot of entrepreneurs at the moment, so we can't write policies for entrepreneurs to come here. But what we can try to do is make the rules around what your, your commercial business looks like or how it operates a little bit easier for the folks. Parking is often one of the things that kills businesses, they have to give up a lot of land for parking for their customers, but they need that land for their building or for the items that they're selling, so looking at your parking provisions is one way that we can try to make that a bit easier for, for businesses. And again, trying to create more of the pedestrian experience. I haven't walked around your whole town, but it feels like sometimes I'm walking and then I run out of sidewalk, and now I'm walking into a car. So just, just kind of allowing for a little bit more connectivity so people can walk from place to place and get what they need done and go back. And again, I did say we're talking to both the airport and the DND, so I've read what I've read in my paper, I've tried to delve in some more deeper things, so we're going to try to figure out what this impact of the airport expansion has on the city and who's driving it, and if it means that there are more residents coming or businesses coming. Probably through the DND at this point. Recreation, so I understand you have a very good system of community-based parks throughout town. So looking to preserve those and where we can enhance trail connections. I understand also that there's a lot of cross-country ski trails. And so we want to protect that and where we can enhance connectivity. If there are new developments, we want to make sure that recreation is part of what they planned for. Again, this is kind of repetitive, but the pool and recreation center are aging, so again, that lifecycle planning piece. Where we can, looking at partnerships to help with those assets. And then slightly different subjects, the cemetery to improve and expand that location. From what I've understood and heard to date, we don't need to look for a new cemetery location. It sounds like there is enough space there for, for the future. Agriculture, so you've got the wonderful greenhouse you do, so seeing where we can build off of all of the great things happening there, possibly even offer some commercial opportunities for local food production. Tourism, you've got a lot of people coming to town, so there could be partnerships between the education and hospitality groups, public art and wayfinding. There's a lot of artists up here, there could be opportunities to highlight, highlight that, like they've done at the store. And finding the economic benefits from that tourism would be quite a basically would be very successful if you do that. So all that being said, and I don't want to repeat myself too, too much, but there's about kind of five obstacles, I think, kind of facing this community that can be addressed with the money from Housing Accelerator Fund and changes to the community plan and zoning bylaw. Again, trying to get rid of the vacant properties and have them developed, look at more options for housing for folks. Encouraging businesses, understanding and preparing for the impacts of climate change. And mixed uses with from an infrastructure point of view is better bang for your fiscal buck. And it often makes a more enjoyable community for the residents because they can walk to or access things rather than having to get in a car and drive all the way across town to go to the kingdom store. And then we are looking at site-specific policies for the airport and aerodrome area. And the antenna facilities or satellite farm, whichever you want to call it, but it's a very new use that we want to, again, write some policies around how it could support some of the initiatives that they're looking to do in town. And it could be carryover between economic tourism and other types of ventures that could promote growth in town. And then again, it's going to, we want to make it very clear that the utilitor would not be expanded everywhere throughout the municipal boundary. And so if people are thinking about living in something called the country residential on the highway, they're probably not going to get the same services that somebody lives across the street from here would be getting. What we've come up with so far, and if you look at your existing zoning bylaw, there are like four or five different kinds of residential, there's two different types of commercial. But what we're trying to do is, where possible, streamline it. So there still might be a couple different types of residential in the zoning bylaw. But right now in your community plan, that higher-level document, we're suggesting yellow is residential, red is commercial. We're suggesting your, your community core or your downtown is really the central area, and there would be policies to really encourage that mixed-use two-or-three-story maybe main floor is a business, an office, and above that it is residential. Communities would be buildings like this or a public works facility. Industrial is pretty straightforward. There's the recreation and open space. The environments in the sense that there is are often around your shorelines. There are areas that we might know that have permafrost or specific hazards that we don't want people building on or near. The special areas, I'll talk about that very specifically in a minute. Hinterland is a term that doesn't often jive well with communities, and we don't need to offend anybody, so it might be a better term for hinterland. But hinterland would be anything that's not identified in the other colors, and we don't we don't see anything being built there. But what we do see happening there is any historic, on-the-land, cultural activities. I believe cross-country skiing fits in there. If somebody was setting up a fish camp or a hunting camp, and they stayed there for a week while they were doing that activity, that would probably be okay, but again, no permanent structures, and we build the cabins out there. And just kind of protecting those, those lands. And then we have identified areas for future residential or future industrial, and something called the future growth area, which I would recommend stays that way until a further study is done to figure out exactly what you want in that area. So sometimes it's called like an area development plan, and it comes up with even more specific policies for a part of your town that might have its own vision or feel or, or setbacks or something like that. This map at this scale is not the easiest to be, I do apologize for not seeing it. So we will have printed maps at the public meeting. We can probably print out a map or we can agree with you. So as I say, this is this hinterland that I speak of. So we wouldn't really see anything being built along there. Of course, this is your airport area. The purple is the industrial, and so this is the zone of the community proper. So this would be the future growth area, which if something needs to be built in town, we're going to go that direction. But at this moment in time, we don't know if there's a need for more residential lots, because we can probably clean up some of the derelict buildings and the vacant lots and build out. It is costly to build out, so before you build out, we recommend looking at building in and up. What else? The dark lines, again, that dark green is trying to protect your shoreline, not only from erosion, but also trying to maintain public access. We don't like privatization of the shoreline, it tends to cause problems. Orange would become kind of like your core downtown area with all the mix of uses. The red are pockets of commercial. And if I haven't said already, the blue is your, your community uses. And that's a very high level, how we're suggesting your community focus its, its different types of development over the next twenty, twenty-five years. The plan itself, once adopted, gets reviewed every eight, so it's not promising this is going to happen. But it gives some, some direction and sets some expectations for folks. Again, this is draft, we're really looking to get feedback to the, how well we did. Hope I've really explained all of this. Well, I won't say that all over, except for oh, we have a slide. Oh, sorry. So I guess I don't have the slide for that. So we, at a high level, what residential aims to do is have an inventory for the next ten years of lands available, a variety of housing, lot sizes, and some non-residential uses may be allowed in, in some non-residential uses may be allowed in in yellow areas, um, but they would have to support that that neighborhood use. Uh, so sometimes we see uh home-based businesses such as uh hairdressers, daycares, things that really kind of don't disrupt people living next door. Um, there's often limitations on how many visitors can come a day. So so if that business is too successful, um, you encourage them to set up a a spot in in your downtown or a commercial area. Um, so again, that downtown core, um, would be a mixed use, love for a variety of commercial and residential uses. Um, and it really, that downtown should have things that service the needs of the public. Um, often restaurants, retail, and professional services. Um, not going to read all these words, but basically, um, there there could be primary or secondary types of manufacturing. I know there's not a lot of manufacturing up here, but industrial is usually defined as something that has nuisance impacts, uh vibration, dust, noise, smells. Um, so you don't really want people living next to that. It should be some interesting pictures of yellow knife, or we're going to try to not have another angle subdivision. Uh, um, but uh yeah, making sure there are spaces for your proper industrial uses to do what they need to do and not be uh infringed upon uh by their neighbors. Um, and then again, this science and technology, um, really looking at how that satellite station can be used um by either education, um, research. There might be partnerships with with the college, there could be a lot of opportunities. They also have a very large piece of land that um it seems like they don't want to put uh communication towers on the whole thing, so that there could be some opportunities with the town to figure out what trail connections or or other things might work along there. Um, so as far as the 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 recreation open space, um, it's just really making sure that that the town can maintain and offer amenities in areas of the town that uh work for for residents and and the visitors, um. You want to have some buffers, kind of like with the industrial, sometimes uh recreation can have noise and lots of traffic. So you don't want that uh that large scale happening in your residential area. So just kind of making sure you're you're scaling the right size of of land, the right size of activities that that you want to promote. Um, so the environmental sense of areas, uh, this is something that we really try to focus on, particularly seeing how quickly climate change impacts uh our our hitting communities. Um, so as I said earlier, having setbacks from the water, that's been a pretty common thing for for a number of years. Um, but also looking at mitigation mitigation measures, um, sure, things that that we know could be hazards, I do not know if you have permafrost, I I didn't get into that detail, but we know there's an area that that is um susceptible to early um erosion or melting, flooding, those sorts of things. Um, and of course, uh, at this point, you know, fire is something on the top of mind of everybody. So having some uh provisions around that as well. Um, not going to repeat what community uses, but basically, yeah, making sure that um we've got these facilities for folks here in town. Food security is something that uh I think your community has done better than most. Um, but you know, never, never stop, so so looking at uh other ways of having uh food available year round for for residents. Uh, so the structural development areas, um, this should not be used very often, like a special area is is that. It's that you don't have any other policies or any other rules or anything else in the document that really fits for this. And so we've identified some lands uh adjacent to your, I think it's your venue that are vacant and we don't want to just pop anything there. So we would have to be um looking at what fits, how it fits, and if it's going to have special rules or provisions or policies around that. Um, already explained the hint lands, we'll skip over that one. Um, solid waste, uh, so making sure that you have enough land area for the future. And then something that has come up in speaking with Michael is um making sure there's sufficient space aside for correcting and soft filing of of metal. Um, because right now it's not very lucrative to ship it down, but uh this it's here, we've got to deal with it. And there could be opportunities in the future for that. Uh, similar but different, um, there might be opportunities for businesses to come in town and for lack of better word, clean your dirt. Um, so that needs to be done in an industrial area or a special area so that it doesn't uh inflict upon other other uses. So um solid waste can be a lot of things, not just people getting their day-to-day waste collected. Uh, so making sure that the town has a long-term uh land-based strategy for that. Uh, and then the emergency managers. Uh, so this also goes back to kind of the fire and the water flooding. Um, but but also just how how we deal with our regular uh emergency responses, uh, and we ask of utilitors, where we need to to hook up. Um, do the operators know the municipal addresses and can they get to the the right places, those those sorts of things? Um, already spoken to vacant properties, and I think I've already spoken basically to the economic development, so I'm just going to skip across that. Um, but yes, the partnerships, I think, is a very key point. And again, through our early um engagements and talking to those groups, they're they're well aware that these treatments are happening. So hopefully there's some some buy-in and opportunities to work together. Um, future development, let's making sure that we kind of identified what the possibilities are and how to leverage things like your existing utility door uh against uh future development opportunities and putting the the right buildings in the right places so that we don't have to extend further uh pipes, uh, that that costs a lot. Um, and adequate drainage for new developments, that's another one, now that we know that um, there's, it could be more snow, more rain happening at different times. Uh, maybe historically, you didn't have to deal with with a lot of drainage um in the spring, uh, but but you may have to now, so making sure that we are planning and providing space and connection for those things. Um, this also uh addresses your subdivision in in general. Um, it will set some standard requirements for new subdivisions. Um, particularly with regard to servicing and access uh and and an application process that they go through with the hotel. Um, so I've said this a few times, so your community plan is that high-level documents. And then how that those visions get implemented is predominantly through your zoning by law. But you also have a land administration by law and and other bylaws that can be used to support this. So uh whether it's the demolition, derelict building, building by law? Yeah, whether it's the derelict building by law or some other by law that that they have to make sure that they all work hand in hand with the the town's vision. Um, so at a high level, what we're proposing to do in your zoning by law is really make the wording so that the average person can understand what the heck they're supposed to be following and really beefing up the definitions section so that there's no confusion about what something means. Because people use words in passing all the time and that's fine, but when we are trying to uh permit the use or follow some instructions, we'll have to make sure that we're using the same words i- in the same way. Um, again, we haven't figured out how many residential zones there will be. But what we were hoping to do is basically like one or two uh residential, or one or two or something, and allow greater variety of types of housing to be uh permitted in those zones. Um, yeah, and then we've already talked about the local agriculture um and redevelopment of the of the core. Um, the town could develop a a grants and incentives program. Uh, we could also look to see if there's anything at a national or territorial level to to help me support that that core growth. Um, an example could be uh a no interest loan for five years. Um, or working uh on some sort of uh tax incremental increase so that the person that's developing the lot, especially with a small business owner, um, can make their dollar go further. Uh, what we found is when people be developed, uh, improve their building facades, uh, people are more willing to come down the street, but once you've got people coming down the street, uh, then they're going into the store. So um leveraging uh municipal dollars with developer dollars can can often get you uh to the place you want to be faster. Uh, so again, kind of explained where we've been. Um, we we hope to finalize these documents and have them back to you around November, December. Let council can review and let us know if we've got it wrong, so we can fix it again. Um, or otherwise, you you can accept it and uh be able to start the uh bylaw adoption process. And I talked a lot, so hopefully uh everybody's still awake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't fly any questions. I'll turn it down. Here's a question towards our consultants or towards administration. Uh, I know that uh what do we need to do? Right now, we can't really have a mini home on a property. We've had a couple and we've been chased down. So what can we do as councils? I know you're encouraging the secondary suites, possible backyard mini homes, that type of thing. Obviously, our bylaws right now aren't meeting that need. Uh, so is it just a simple bylaw change?
Yes, um, you have to follow the rules you have in place today. Um, so I don't think there's any, I don't know all of your bylaws, but I don't think there's anything that would allow you to permit it. The faster we change the community plan, the only power it depends upon is, and that allows more opportunities for folks.
Any other questions? Being done, thank you very much for the report.
Let's bring this back to you, David.
Moving on, item five of the question period, if I have no count, that's the easy one. Six point one, minutes of the Oc- October eleventh, twenty twenty-three council meeting. Any questions, directions? Being done. Item seven, the action items list, any comments? Council gallons.
One of the items was the um kind of finally here starting, uh, the public safety issue with the fire. Um, sorry, it was the um there are G by engineers on condemned abandoned buildings. Uh, will we see that? Allow us to stay attention.
So uh, Council gallons on October the twentieth, which was this past Friday, I received an update from A home, our engineering firm based out of Edmonton. They were on site a number of weeks ago to do the assessment and they prepared the report. And I was told on Friday that we have to have it this week. And then from there, once we receive that report, we'll move to next steps with legal to see what um the steps would be to start the demolition process. And we'll go from there. And then hopefully in the springtime when the adoption comes up, we'll be able to buy that property back with the each of the accelerator.
Sounds good. Hopefully we'll see a resolution by somewhere. Thank you. Any further questions? Being done. New business, item eight point one, housing accelerator fund application, you have the information in front of you. Any comments? Council gallons.
Just quick question about the budget, um, I notice we have the five different initiatives. The situation where we come under budget for those initiatives and there's additional dollars, can we move those dollars around? Can we use another, another, further initiatives?
Council gallons, so I'm in the habit of hitting on off mic, but I don't realize that I'm out there anymore. But anyway, um, so I don't have an answer for you on any dollars that are left over out of that fund yet. Um, it's so new to us yet that I I don't have an answer for how access dollars would be handled. Um, but as we get approved and as we start to get um our initiatives underway and they start to fund them, then those questions should hopefully get answered.
Anything further? Eight point two, council committee meeting scheduled, require a motion on Wednesday, any questions? No, eight point three. Charlotte V who's center request for variance. Anybody have any comments on this one? For a motion to approve on Wednesday. We have no bylaws. Department Edgar, it works right. Do you, we definitely first. In the focus, Director Larmen can go first. I thought you would have drawn strong.
Should be able to just act out when we need to.
Were there, were there any new ones?
So X out of the project. Oh, I think that maybe.
Hey, no, 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 I won't say it on the phone. Oh, instead of lies.
Excellent quantity of buckets. Uh, I've got a bunch of numbers on there. Twelve, we've got new recruits, twelve new recruits, more than we've ever had for our recruit training program. Uh, members from all sorts of different sectors and backgrounds within the community. Some have been here their entire lives, some only a few weeks, but all are linked by their interest in helping our community. They learn basic firefighting skills during our two weekend program with an emphasis on safe operations. They involve training in emergency scenes. These firefighters, community members, you see in everyday life, ranging from nurses to teachers to construction laborers to administrative workers. Our increased social media presence will showcase this training program to others in the future. Eighty-nine, eighty-nine traffic interventions in partnership with R C and P over several combined enforcement initiatives. So our municipal enforcement division is committed to working with R C and P on a regular basis to increase cooperation, provide cross-training, and further community police and safety missions in NIVIC. One hundred and seventy-one, that's the number of members trained by the I F E over the last decade. This is the number of members who have been a part of the I F E long enough to be assigned an employee number by the town. We continue this training in our R T P, ten-on-one professional firefighter program, and other internal partner training opportunities. Ten plus one, the plus one is our newest adoptee, Sprocket, who took a business class flight to his new owners in Edmonton. Note the doggy business classes underneath the plane and cargo. Our M E D office worked tirelessly to expect and respond to animal welfare calls and to look after the dogs in our cares care and control. We're seeking to expand the outreach we do with southern-based animal welfare agencies to streamline and improve our southern adoption processes. That these eleven animals have been correct, eleven more animals have been provided with new homes, both in Anubik and the bar, with one more pup heading up this week. Twenty-one, twenty-one meetings that have occurred or are scheduled with allied agencies, community partners, and other organizations that the protective services department works with on a regular basis. Continuing and improving these relationships through cross-training, mutual aid agreements, and other cooperative discussions is a priority for the protective services department. Including these are recent meetings with V C C staff to update the NIVIC wildfire fire response plan in preparation of our fire break funding, our P D. We continue to work closely with the R R C and P, Office of Fire Marshal, uh, A M S, and other organizations to improve and coordinate community services we provide to the town. Three thousand two hundred and thirty, that's the number of kilometers that we took to bring pump or two back to Nuvik in working order. With some minor delays, we have a frontline apparatus apparatus back in service in time for winter to provide protection to the community. The cost would lower than anticipated with a final repair bill of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-two cents. And this included a new windshield, batteries, and other components to ensure that the operator is D O P and N F A compliant. My quality update, we just completed our ten-on-one professional firefighter training. Six members of the I F E recently completed their finest final skills evaluation this weekend. Uh, this certification continues our longstanding emphasis on training and development in support of local continuity and succession planning. We invited but invited firefighters from Norman Wells to attend these evaluations as previously scheduled sessions in Hay River, Kansas, due to the wildfires. The collaboration and relationship building during the week of evaluation strengthened the fire service in the N T will result in increasing coordination, sharing and best will result in increasing coordination, sharing of best practices and other cooperation in the programs of community safety. Congratulations to Noel Cockney, Carl Morata, Daniel DeKunmu, Eric Williams, Paul Hayes and Trevor Page are completing this training. That's all of us right in the middle there. Uh, A T V interventions, uh, over several weekends, Carl and Raven, our M A D P's officers, partnered with members of the R C and P and setting up safety initiative stops with an emphasis on the A T V safety. They only have three E T Vs that were stopped during this initiative on the roadways, but we feel that the increased public focus focus on safety has resulted in improvement in awareness of the rules and regulations as well as best practices concerning motorized vehicles, vehicles used within town limits. M A D officers will continue to cooperate with the R C and P on a regular basis throughout the remainder of the year. Recruit training, uh, twelve firefighters joined the fire services division underway training during our two-week recruit training program. We'll continue, uh, offering that type of training to them to get them developed and operating with our current staff. The fire prevention week is coming up. Uh, it's actually passed, but we're doing a different fire prevention week in a NIVIC to correspond with the schools calendars. So public service, uh, or sort of protected services staffs are gearing up with, uh, for fire prevention week twenty twenty-three, focusing on in-school education and activity centers. Uh, we're coordinating this with East Three Schools. Our members and staff will visit each classroom, providing comprehensive, age-appropriate fire and life safety education. Since we weren't able to, uh, conduct it during, uh, the actual fire prevention week, our programs will be timed to coincide with other fire and life safety initiatives. And thanks to the school, uh, East Three Elementary and East Three Secondary for helping us coordinate these plans. We've been hard at work to improve the safety of our community, deliver training and education to our personnel and to lead with our partners and other community organizations. We're proud of the work we do and the members who provide these valuable services. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Laura.
Thank you.
Um, so for last best month, uh, we got a new recruit who's coming on December third. Uh, he's going to be the special project and event coordinator finally. So we'll have a full team by December third. Um, we are also attending the Buffalo Delta and Business Trade Show on Friday, representing the town. Um, I'll have Olivia with me who is at the phone desk right now. She is in charge of the Innovate Guide, uh, campaign. And so we'll encourage businesses on Friday to sign up for the Innovate Guide. As I'm really hoping, uh, to close the campaign, I'm, it's supposed to close October thirty-first, but I know we have delays and people take some time to answer, so I'm hoping by the second week of November, we can actually get this going. So we can release the Innovate Guide by May twenty twenty-four and get ready for the tourist season. Um, so that's for Friday, the Business Trade Show. Um, we're also launching this week the sponsorship for the Sunrise Festival as we're getting everything organized and the planning and organization going. So that's a big project for January that we're working on right now. And, uh, financially speaking, the shop is very low, slow because, uh, we don't have that many tourists and people coming, uh, very, very slow. And of course I'm working on the budget right now, trying to figure out everything that Jackie has been working on for the last few years, having a strategy for and keep going the strategy or review it and see what we can, uh, keep doing or improve. Uh, yeah, so that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for your report.
Evening, everybody. Uh, an update with regard to, uh, infrastructure. So we're going to start with staffing. Right now, we have myself, uh, the four utilidor technicians. And we have just brought on Peter, who I believe is still on the line listening. Uh, Peter Schultz is our contracted development officer. So, uh, we are slowly starting to build our team. I am hoping to have a public works clerk that will assist with some of the paperwork and juggling the multiple, multiple engineers and projects that we are working on right now. And also we have, um, I've received lots of interest with regard to the director of infrastructure as well. So hopefully by spring, certainly early new year, we will actually have a team that we can start then developing processes and refining uh, some of the work that we are doing. With regard to some of the work that we are doing, uh, in terms of any capital purchases that we are looking at, uh, right now, we are just in the works of bringing up a street sweeper that we have, uh, a newer model that we have purchased, uh, the old one was was not going to make it back up here. So we have put that to auction and the proceeds to that will go towards our new one. So we are hoping that, uh, come springtime, we will actually get, uh, you know, walkable and uh, you know, the skateboarders will be able to go down the street without uh, running the risk of hitting all the gravel and that type of thing. So very happy about that. Uh, as well as, uh, additional garbage bins that we're building, uh, into the capital project as well have been ordered and they are going to be on their way up, which will allow the residents who still have to, uh, have their private uh, waste picked up, we will, uh, be incorporating more bins to make it, uh, more accessible for people to discard their waste. The projects that we continue to work on, and this is primarily the, uh, actually, I'll talk about our public works committee first. So that we did have our first meeting and, uh, looking around the room at those that were in the meeting, I think it was a successful meeting to get started with in terms of the new direction that we're trying to take with regard to public works and infrastructure. I, we, the good thing I liked about it was it was a shared discussion between council as well as the frontline staff. So there was, uh, an integration between what council wanted and the ability and the capacity of staff to be able to have that conversation, uh, in terms of what expectations are and what our capacity is to meet those. So we're very pleased about that. Um, from that, we took a look at our, uh, as in when's contracts, which will be tendered, will, our F Ps will be out by the end of the week to, uh, to work on our twenty twenty-four as and when contracts, uh, as well as what the town has the capacity to absorb. We have an inventory. We also have equipment that, uh, that has been used in the past that we are going to look at reinvigorating that, making sure that it's operational, uh, as well as staffing capacities and bring some of that together. So some of our ads and wins may change a little in terms of our ability to do some of the work ourselves with our existing staff and bringing more staff in, uh, that way. So those will be coming out this week. One thing that I think was successful from that committee was, uh, the suggestion, uh, the concern the councillor day had actually with regard to the large items that were being left at the garbage bins, uh, just as freezing and snow was starting to come, there was large items there. So we decided to institute a large item pickup to allow people to do some fall cleaning rather than just the spring cleaning. And according to uh, Director Krug, it was actually a very successful. We had lots of, uh, people, uh, assisting and thanking us for that opportunity, which will help with the plowing definitely. Further to that, uh, construction season has now ended. Um, the work that is being done on Brainet Road, uh, has been complete. It is drivable and that is closing it off for this season with the expectation that next year we will be looking at, uh, finishing up that project, uh, looking at paving, which is a much larger discussion that S A O Travis will have about the the paving requirements and how we can either time with a paving machine to be up here or what we can do to bring up a paving machine to accommodate our needs as well as, uh, others within the community. The utilidor, uh, if the utilidor replacement is complete. Uh, we are just waiting for the engineer to come up later this week for the final inspection and the sign off for that utilidor replacement. We are looking at, uh, again, I looked at the S A O for this. Um, when we are looking at expanding our utilidor, looking at alternatives, which will involve first a study to see if it's viable. And then we will be putting out a request for proposal for that study as well as uh, actually having some pilot spots that we hopefully will address in the coming year. The water treatment plant, uh, any of the work that was being done there, either with the hardware, the building itself or the electronics in terms of the monitoring systems, those have been, uh, worked on and there's a, a couple of things to finish off with those projects, otherwise they are done. The biomass, which is the heating system up with the reservoirs, uh, that is completed for the year. There is still some work to do to tie in the silo, but that will occur next year. I can assure you, we have warm water. It is being heated up there. All of the heaters are are set up up there, so we don't have to worry about, uh, about putting those online. They are on law, online now. Anything else with regard to any of the major projects? Again, most of the construction is complete. There is some earthworks that are going to be done up at the, uh, landfill site in terms of the fencing that will be, uh, coming forward soon, uh, from the contractor. And I believe that is it, other than welcome Peter as the official development officer. And I can assure you that it is money well spent because he is on top of all of the eight development permits that we've had since August.
Thank you. Any questions? Being done.
Well, this is fine. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, well, this is my first attempt at visual report. Verbal. Um, so my quantitative update, um, I've started to dissect some of my operating budget, um, with guidance from Michael and some prep notes already. So I'm, uh, looking to get into that. I know there's a deadline for that. So that's, uh, a major major one to get off my, off my desk for review and then move forward with that part. Looking to spend some capital dollars, um, in the fitness center already, um, a new spin bike and a new fitness center operating system has been purchased and installed and is operating, um, exceptionally well compared to some others. What was installed, um, users are finding it to be, uh, much more satisfying to be able to use the fitness center when they would like, how they would like, um, at any given time of the day. Uh, so that's been a real, a real bonus. So, um, that has been completed. Um, so what I've accomplished in a couple of weeks, um, we've hired a new, uh, foreman for the Midnight Sun complex, Scott Sims. Uh, he came in with boots on the ground. Um, the very first day he was there, he was painting lines, uh, in the arena with the guys and pulling hose and making ice. So, uh, they kind of gravitated to his, uh, ambitiousness and and they really, they really saw that he was there and he meant business. So they're, um, they're refocused and ready to keep working. Um, we purchased and installed a vending machine. I'm just waiting for some of the tech to, um, get sorted out so that when purchases are made through cash card or, um, coins, that it's all works properly and that we're not charging five hundred dollars for a Pepsi if someone pays for their card. So we're working on some of those things. Um, the M S C concession has been gutted. Um, a lot of the old equipment has been, um, uninstalled. Um, walls have been wiped, floors have been swept. Um, those, those things there are taking shape. The refrigeration tech, uh, is coming up November second. Uh, he'll be here to work on the, uh, the fridge and the freezer so that, um, one of our concession operators there, all they have to do is turn on the lights and open the door and they'll be, they'll be ready to go. Um, but Cindy had mentioned our large, our large item pickup was really, really popular and widely successful. I had I I can't tell you how many, you know, I probably had well over fifty emails and phone calls from people. Um, I would say forty-nine of those people were very receptive, although one was maybe a bit a bit apprehensive, or I'm not sure what the word was, but anyway, his stuff got picked up or their stuff got picked up. Uh, we have a new Zamboni at the Midnight Sun complex as well. It's a new model. It's a two thousand fifteen four forty-five. Uh, it's really sharp. It's it's awesome. And our arena, although we did miss our deadline by a couple of days, um, our our users were not ready to actually start their ice as some of their paperwork wasn't in place. Um, but we did open, uh, the following Monday after Thanksgiving or following Tuesday after Thanksgiving. Um, and what's coming up, um, the NIVIC Physician Society has sponsored swimming again, uh, for the month of, uh, November. So swimming will remain free for non-instructor-led programs. Uh, Scott's actually going to Norman Wells to take an arena level, uh, an arena level one course. So he'll get some, uh, training already, um, from there. And, uh, I've done another uh, tutorial and a module, um, site exploration, um, with Universe booking software. Um, and that's to get the Midnight Sun complex online for booking everything from uh, community rooms, uh, and 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 being able to, you know, identify what your needs are, um, what day you want it, for how long you want it with any type of of asset that we we have. And that can all be booked through the software. Um, you can, you can book swimming lessons from it. You can book ice rentals. Uh, there's just a magnitude of things, um, that this software can do. So I'm, I've been working with Greg Strong from Universe Booking Systems. So that's, uh, another thing that's upcoming. And that's a picture of our Zamboni. Um, the only real difference from our Zamboni from the four forty model uh, in this model, it's it's nine years newer. Uh, and it has an automated ice auger instead of the guys having to drive and and bang out the ice chute. This one has a button that they can just push and it automatically uh, cleans the chute and fills the bucket. So, um, it's the same blue. Um, I am going to try to get some advertising, uh, put on the side of it eventually. Um, but for now, that's, that's what it looks like.
Thank you. Any questions? Council, uh, Wainham was first to start.
What do we do with the older equipment that we send it, the options recover and cause?
Uh, no, the Zamboni right now is down in, uh, Atchison, being repaired by, uh, industrial machine and will come up as a supplementary, uh, piece of equipment.
How about the kitchen still, kitchen stuff?
Uh, that kitchen equipment was deemed
Absolutely.
deemed it was, it was so far beyond repair that, um, what was salvageable was identified and saved, uh, for little Eva's, but in their R F P, they've gone, they're already purchasing equipment for their, uh, their operation that we will own and possess. So with them being the professionals, they purchased what they've identified were the best use. We, we did manage to save some of the equipment. And if they say, you know, this dough machine isn't what we want, we'll remove it if they have their own. So everything else, and it was either, I mean, it was either burnt or, you know, some of the the internals of the stove were so brittle that you pick them up and you just disintegrate them in your hand.
And what about your Zamboni? I said, you're looking at putting something on it. Are you going to go too bit for sponsorship or?
Uh, haven't gotten quite, quite that far yet, but it will go out for, it could go out for mass consumption or it could go out for, um,
Advertising or?
Yes, it could, maybe one side could go out for, you know.
North wind. Turn a green.
Just curious because we should be able to advertise on it and sell the space, right?
Yeah, I was hoping to be able to have on one side if it's, you know, uh, an unnamed or an unnamed organization on one side. So when it's going down one way, people see that and when they turn, the other side is another organization in the front has another option as well. So I have been thinking about the ideas. I just haven't been able to, uh, pursue them just yet.
I'll cut off some, uh, base. I think it'd be a good thing.
Thank you. Councilor Edward.
Um, well, Council Wainham kind of stepped on me a little bit. Um, I was going to ask about the Zamboni advertising after seeing that beautiful side. But that does lead me to ask about the arena board advertising. That A P T N sign has not been paid for in ten years. So can we either take it off or can we find a replacement for it?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, because I haven't been getting pre-advertising for all. Yeah, because I haven't been getting pre-advertising for a long time.
I will have it removed.
Or, or approach the advertising company that was, it was set up with their contracts on record. And see if there's somebody else they can refer to us. For a few running the year.
Thank you. Any other questions? A fail, Cravish.
Uh, Councilor Wayne, I just wanted to add to your question on the backups of Zamboni. It was still repairable and still worth investing, which we spent just under thirty thousand dollars to refurbish it. And turn it back into a useful piece of the equipment. And one of the reasons for that is we never want to have a downtime, especially when there's a tournament talk. If, if for whatever reason Zamboni goes down, we've got a backup one on site. And the other reason is for the local community as well, some of the other smaller communities around us may need a backup making from time to time. Land out and help them out with. And I've also heard and correct me if I'm wrong, but do we not have an outdoor skating pond here as well? Where we actually take the Zamboni down for a certain period of time and clean the ice?
We've never put a Zamboni at that risk of how we have to.
Is apparently is it for the sunrise festival or there's people skating or something? I don't know. So that was one of the other reasons for having.
I think there was a sunrise festival maybe two years ago or three years ago. Where there was a rink that was on the baseball diamond. And some work was done there with the Zamboni. Uh, there may have been one down at Twin Lakes on the river. Um, and the only other outdoor rink is something that the fire department does for Inglemo Hall. But that would be the fire department's left, the Zamboni wants to get that.
Not, anyway, not a bad asset to have as a backup for the, for the investment you can set up.
Anything further, Councilor Wayne?
I, I would like to see a package for. Put up for sponsorship on the Zamboni, but put up for tender or martyr or something that fit the community, business community. Hyped up.
Blackface TV.
I think highest bid gets. Or you're something like that, just.
But along the idea of advertising, if they're two Zambonis, there's nothing. Would be, we use a second Zamboni for the same purpose? Would you want to advertise on the second one?
It is an idea. My only, my only concern would be that if we have a primary unit that we're using all the time, that that secondary unit's advertising wouldn't be displayed as the client may would, may want. So they may feel that their advertising dollars is not going to scar. But, um, if there are multiple companies, we could definitely. Share the Zamboni.
Or you can get electronic boards and advertise through your electronic boards and there, and we have lots of space. Something creative and fun.
Any other question? Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item eleven, eleven point one. Strategic priorities chart. There for your information. Eleven point two is various research projects from the Research Institute. Item twelve, council concerns. Anything to make? Counselor Devlin.
I just had a question just about that sea cam that's on Mackenzie. Is it just very, very temporary or just look really ugly? And I didn't thought we had a guy when I get sea cams. Right on, it's on the old Beckett's lot. I don't know. I saw that. I'm more than too sure it was there.
I thought it might have been the thing started at the age long.
Yeah, so I just, I just, I'm just curious about it.
We'll certainly check in. Anything else? Being none. There are no in camera, so I need a motion to adjourn. Councilor, all in favor? Wish to carry. A reminder, a motion to adjourn does not require a sentence.